Well, welcome to everyone. Thank you for taking time out tonight to attend our June Town Hall. This is Fiona's last town hall as our CEO. So I want to thank her firstly for being such a wonderful CEO for me to work with. It's been a joy and I'm gonna miss her. And we have a lot to go through tonight, so thank you all again for coming. And tonight, you're gonna hear from me and Fiona. Our gent is tonight, we're gonna start with some information about our CEO search. We're gonna have a little update on membership, some update on campus, camp, campus, camp updates. Also, we've got some great updates about our action teams from our AI project. We're gonna talk about our IDEA and belonging initiatives that have been started. And then Fiona's gonna give us her reflections over her last nine years as CEO of GSNI. And then she's gonna give us a little bit of insight to her learnings from her PhD project, examining how young women who develop leadership skills and self-identify and the positive role that parents and all of you troop volunteers can play. And then we're gonna share some upcoming important dates for volunteers. So I wanted to give you tonight a little update on our CEO's search process. I know you've probably all been wondering, and the timeline. We started in January, the Board of Directors formed a CEO Search Committee made up of four board members, current board members, and three past board members. And we formed that committee then in January. And then GSUSA helped guide us to a search firm. And we employed a search firm called Evergreen Resources. And they're the ones that had helped us hire Fiona. So we were pleased with their work and their thoroughness. And so the CEO search firm got busy and we had over 78 applications. And the Evergreen got busy and went through those applications, they're in the staff. And then in late April, gave us five very qualified candidates that the committee got together on five different nights and held Zoom interviews with those five candidates. Then after, we had a list of questions. And the questions that we asked our candidates, many of them came from the surveys that we did with volunteers, girls, parents, and staff on what they would like to see in a CEO, what were the qualities they would like to see in a CEO. So we took a lot of our questions from the results of those surveys. And so we asked them a lot of questions and gave them certain scenarios on how they would handle certain activities within our Girl Scout Council. And after that, five interviews were done, then the search committee deliberated. And we chose two candidates from that five. And then in early May, we met with those two in person. They came to two of our resource centers. One evening, we devoted one evening to each candidate. We invited the entire CEO Search Committee. And again, we gave them key projects to do. We gave them scenarios. One of the scenarios was membership recruitment. And what would they do? We also asked them to give us a timeline on what they would do in their first 100 days as CEO of GSNI. So they gave us their presentations, we asked them questions again, and went a little more in-depth with those questions. And from that, then the search committee deliberated, and I call it custom discussed, looked at the pros and the cons, asked us some very difficult questions about what we also were looking for in a CEO for the future of GSNI. And we made our selection. And then, once the selection is made, the board has to approve of that selection. So we presented the resume and the selection, the candidate selected to the Board of Directors at a special meeting of the board. And they asked the committee questions and we answered them. And they gave us the approval to hire our new CEO, who will be Dr. Carrie Rockwell. Dr. Rockwell has a background in education, K through 12 education. She is currently superintendent of a school district down in central Illinois. Her husband was in the military, so they've had a lot of different towns they've lived in. She has two daughters, both in college, and she was a Girl Scout. And she, her mother was her leader. And some of her best memories were from her time at Girl Scout camp. So she said that's the first place she wants to go is Girl Scout, visit all our camps. So I think you will really enjoy meeting her. And I know you all will give her a wonderful, warm welcome when she arrives. She will start with GSNI on August 1st. So we're very thrilled and excited.
So now it's over to me. And I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of how the business of the council is going before I talk a little bit more about reflections. So I wanted to give you a membership update. We had a very ambitious target this year, and I have to be honest that we didn't make it. But it was very much more ambitious than many of the other councils. And we're actually doing better than the national average. So you can see that we're almost at 5.6% increase from this time on this day last year, which is great. I can't remember a time in Girl Scouts and GSNI when a council would have grown at 5.8%. And obviously, a lot of this is because we lost so many people in COVID. But nevertheless, it's very heartening to see this growth. And we can see that there's more growth out there and we have good strategies for next year, which is great. So thank you to all the volunteers who are engaged in membership growth. Membership primarily comes for us from three sources, as you probably are aware. Our traditional kind of bread and butter type of Girl Scout experience is the troop experience. And we've recruited over 2,000 new girls this year into new troops. We also have what we call community programs, which are staff-led type programs. This includes AmeriCorps and an R3 program in Rockford that's called Project Opportunity. And these are girls who wouldn't be able to get the Girl Scout experience if we didn't have facilitated troops for them. And then, of course, the other big way that we grow is to retain membership. And we are in the top five in the nation for membership retention last year. And part of that is due to the fact that we had the gift of membership. So it was sort of easy for people to sign up again. And I'm aware that this year, we don't have the gift of membership. We nevertheless have wonderful opportunities for troops to get T-shirts. And June the 30th is our cutoff for that. So if you haven't, or if you know troops who haven't yet renewed and need to do so, please remind them that next week is kind of the final date to do that and get the great incentives as well. Yes, David, I can see that. But the point is that 2,000 new girls, in fact, it's more than 2,000 new girls, but the rest of it comes from retention. So we've retained over 7,000 girls this year, or close to 7,000 girls. So that's how you make the difference up. So remember, membership comes from recruited girls into troops, recruited girls and retained girls into community programs, and then retained girls, which is typically always the biggest number that we have. But obviously, retention as a percentage of a smaller recruitment overall is smaller every year. So that's where it comes from. Adult membership is actually, interestingly, not as high as it was in previous years. We typically do very well in adult membership. And we, we've retained pretty well, which means we've had greater difficulty recruiting this year. So you can see, we're below the national average in adults, but we're above the national average in girl membership. Next slide, thank you. Dana?
That Zoom gets to me every time. I wanted to talk a little bit about tonight, about appreciative inquiry. Many of you participated in our activities last summer. I believe it was last summer already, where we did all the research and came up with our different appreciative inquiry groups. And I wanted just a quick review where we are so far this year, after our first year of doing the appreciative inquiry. We have a market and brand awareness task group. And they're looking at the Girl Scout brand, the GSNI brand, and how we're marketing ourselves and our council and Girl Scouting to the public. Community engagement, I'm a member of that committee. And we're looking about how Girl Scouts can be engaged in their community more. Again, just awareness of Girl Scouts in their community. And by making ourselves more aware, we do lots of things. We have more opportunities for recruitment, we have more opportunities for service projects, and we have more opportunities for finding locations for troop meetings, things like that, if we're more obvious in the community. The next group is looking at recruitment processes, how we recruit from the ground up to make sure they're effective and engaging and streamlined. Older girl engagement, that group also has older girls in this task group. And they're looking at how to keep our older girls involved. What are they looking for in Girl Scouts and what we can provide them to keep them involved in Girl Scouting? The next group is hiring for diversity. We, the board and the council has a commitment for diversity and inclusion. And this task group is looking at making sure our staff reflects the diversity of our council. And along with that was a commitment from their Board of Directors to strive to have our Board of Directors reflect the diversity of our council. We have added two more task groups this year. Fiona?
Yes, so the power of these appreciative inquiry action teams is that they were born from asking positive questions of our stakeholders, which include volunteers. And over the past year, I believe through these processes, we've had a better engagement with our volunteers. Holly has also been running kind of, she used to call them town halls. They're now sessions where volunteers have a chance to explore topics with her and give feedback and positive ideas as well. And out of the various town halls that we've had over the course of this year, we've decided to implement two more. And one of them, Charlie and Christina, will be leading, is called Get More Girls to Camp. And this isn't just about the front end of how do we get a girl in a tent? This is about what does it take to do that? So very often, it's about training, as you know, it's about having enough facilitators, it's about having the appropriate accommodation. We have many of these building blocks in place, but they could be working better together to get more girls to camp. And particularly, as we look at this, we want to look through the lens of inclusion and belonging. So we need to be representing our entire council in here. And we need to be able to getting more girls who are Hispanic, or Black, or Native American, or Asian to join us at our various camps and see themselves represented in the activities that we do. So that's one of them. The other one is leadership awards. And you'll be aware that we have the highest awards, which are the Bronze, Silver, and Gold Awards. We also have CIT, which is the Council on Training, which is more of a sort of mentoring outdoor program. And then we have Volunteer in Training, which is a program that actually that very few girls do, which allows girls to become assistant troop leaders as soon as they graduate at the age of 18. And we know that we can do a better job of getting more girls through this process. We get about 10 girls every year into the Gold Award, and that's kind of okay. But it's probably not even as good as the national average for the size of our council. So we'd like to do much better than that. But again, also see a much more diverse base of girls who are, who are, or who should be in Girl Scouts attempting these leadership awards, because the Gold Award really is something that's pretty amazing. And we also know that lots of girls have fun with programing CIT. And being outdoors is a great way to learn leadership as well. Next slide, thank you. So I wanted to do a super brief update about camp. I mean, many of you are at campus as more than I am, as more than some of our staff. But we know there's a lot going on in the summer. And I just wanted to give you a couple of the highlights. And they'll probably recognize many of the photos on here actually seem to be from Camp Dean, but not all of them. So can we move on to the next one? So the first thing is that we have the New Horizons High Ropes Course is up and almost ready to use at Camp McCormick. So any girl who is entering junior level next year, so that means entering fourth grade or above, is able to use the High Ropes Course. I would tell you, these ropes are 40 feet above the ground. So this is not for the faint-hearted, particularly if you're a facilitator. We do need facilitators 18 years or older. And you have to do two days of training and a final test. And Charlie was telling me that we probably need to reach out further into our volunteer base to get facilitators. This is not learning how to do hatchet throwing or archery. This is 40 feet above the ground. You have to be very confident to be, you know, to be up there, not afraid of heights. And you have to be pretty athletic, because there are some pretty athletic things that you have to do up in the air. So he would like us to ask to reach out to people who maybe haven't thought about facilitating before, who would be really interested to have this challenge, who enjoy these sorts of things. And as you can see, there's a High Ropes Training Course, August the 6th to the 7th. And space is limited to 10 people. So if you know somebody younger who might be excited by this opportunity and doesn't mind spending all day standing on a tiny platform 40 feet in the air or racing across the various activities that you can see, that would be fantastic. And please let Christina know. And then, once we have enough facilitators trained and have passed the test, then we'll be able to start booking with troops as a minimum of a four-hour reservation. So that's pretty exciting. Jason was also telling me that there are future plans to expand this. We hope to put a zip line in as well, that will go kind of somewhere across Camp McCormick. So that'll be a really nice additional activity that we're adding to Camp McCormick. The other thing that we're doing at the moment is we're also expanding archery into a field archery capacity. So they're clearing the space, and there'll be field archery, which is where you move with your bow and arrow. You're not shooting at a static, you're not shooting at a static target, but you are moving to shoot at a static target. So that'll be coming along soon as well, which will be great. Next slide, please. So I don't know if you can see this. I'm gonna have trouble myself seeing it. Let's get me to the participants, and then the screen is wider for me. So what you can see here is different categories of camping that are happening during the period, June the 19th to July the 31st. And we've put up here comparisons to previous years. Now, obviously, the comparison to 2020 and 2021 isn't a very good comparison, because we were completely locked down in 2020 for just about everything, except for families to come out and bubble. So really, the best years to compare to are 2018 and 2019. So if you'd like to take a look at that, you can see that we're actually recovering pretty well. The recovery also, interestingly, is less in sleepover camps, because there are still some parents who are worried about sending their daughters away, because COVID is still around, but much more in troop than family camping. And we've seen this throughout the COVID period, that we've had a really good pickup on family and troop camping. And we're going to continue to do this, even once we get back to normal, whatever normal looks like. We'll continue to offer troop and family camping. The reason it's so great in the summer is that leaders can basically come and, I wouldn't say sit in a lawn chair, but they're responsible for kind of the discipline, but otherwise, everything is managed for them. So facilitated activities, food is prepared, and all the rest of it. So you can really have a decent time at camp and not have to worry about all the, all the things that you might have to do if you needed to be trained to do this as well. You can still see that Camp McCormick has fewer attendees and Dean, that's always been a problem. But we're hoping that with the addition of some of these older girls activities, that we can rectify that a bit going forward, because as we know, we have to use our camps. They're a great, great way to learn leadership and get outdoors, but we do need to use them. So really, really excited for Dean and McCormick for these programs here. The Volunteer-led Day Camp is going really well this summer. And Mary Ann Baby Center is basically booked out all summer with troops who come and do volunteer-led day camping. And that's typically what happens. And again, in previous years, it hasn't been possible to do that. So that's a very busy camp. And in fact, more girls go through volunteer-led day camp than go through many of the council-run programs. So to indicate that. Our biggest problem this summer has been finding staff. And that won't surprise you, I don't think. That's been a problem with all camps. We had to raise the amount of money that we would pay counselors each week. That didn't really make very much of a difference. But you know, when you're competing with McDonald's, it's now offering $14 an hour, you know. And we can't offer that on an hourly basis at camp, it makes it much more difficult. So we're actually having staff come out to cover some of the vacancies that we have, so that we can continue to offer everything that we have said that we would do this summer. Onward, please, Chris, thank you. So after Dana.
That mute gets me every time. I don't want you to have to listen to my dog barking. As you know, through our appreciative inquiry process, we heard a lot of feedback. And one of the things that the Board of Directors is committed to this IDEA and belonging initiatives that we have adopted. Our goal and our desire and our goal is to have every girl feel welcome in Girl Scouting and GSNI. We want every girl to see themselves as a Girl Scout. And we want every volunteer to see themselves as a Girl Scout. And we want to make sure that parents are confident that their girls will learn something from Girl Scouting and that their girls will feel comfortable being a Girl Scout. Our main focus along with this is to increase diversity and learn more about diversity and educate ourselves and our volunteers and our board about diversity. The first project we started with last fall was the Native American. We formed a task group. And we were able to get two Native American consultants from the local Native American museum called Trickster in Schaumburg. And they have been just wonderful and very engaging and welcoming to us and to our committee. We have visited with them many times and learned a great deal about the Native American culture from them. And we're making sure that we have appreciation for their culture, for all these cultures, and not appropriation for the cultures.
So what's been great? Sorry, Dana, finish first.
Sorry. And then, in fact, one of the, our consultants just joined our board. So we're very thrilled to have her join our board and her perspective.
We actually had six working groups that came out of this task force, which is our longest-running belonging task force. And we've got some great things that we'll be bringing to the wider Girl Scout community in this coming year. One of the things that was a very impactful experience for those of us who are on the task force was taking part in a traditional Native American talking circle. And we're working with one of the Native American consultants to create a Girl Scout talking circle, which troops and service units will be able to customize for themselves. The power of these is that it allows you to kind of manage energy in a space and then make sure that everybody has a say. And we envisage that the Native American talking circles with the Girl Scout version could be used at the beginning of troop meetings, perhaps as a sort of way of calming everybody and bringing energy together and sharing things. Or you can discuss a particular topic. The discussion that we had at the Native American Talking Circle in Trickster was actually about how can we be a welcoming organization for all Native American girls? We learned, for example, that you shouldn't hug a Native American girl. It's actually disrespectful. And we know so many of our leaders are huggers, and we all think that girls love that. But it's a cultural thing, isn't it? So we've worked very strongly with them. Another really exciting thing that we're hoping to confirm for October, we don't quite have it on our dates yet, because we're trying to confirm the dancers, is that we expect to have a demonstration powwow. So if you've ever been to a powwow, it looks interesting. You can see people dancing and eating, but it's not really clear what's going on. So we hope we'd have a great attendance, it'll probably be at Camp Dean, and there'll be some demonstration dancers and people to explain to the whole family what happens at a powwow, so that we understand and appreciate their culture much more. So there's a number of things that we're doing on a practical basis to really integrate Native American thinking into our own thinking and to make their community feel welcome. And the Hispanic Task Force, actually, that's meeting tomorrow evening. They are, it's composed of some volunteers, again, a board member who's bilingual, bicultural, and some of our bilingual, bicultural staff. And they're specifically looking at the different segments and nationalities of Hispanic families that we have in our geography and continuing to work on and expand in a bigger way how we market, how we make sure that Hispanic girls feel engaged. We actually have right now about 900 Hispanic girls or girls who identify as Hispanic in our geography. So about 10% of our girls are Hispanic. But Hispanic families make up a bigger percentage of our overall population. So we need to increase our engagement with them. And obviously, the groups that are hardest to engage with are those that are first generation here, where the parents don't speak Spanish at all. So we have a particular focus on that. We've just kicked off a group looking at making Black families welcome in GSNI. We have a number of people who've joined us from Rockford and from Aurora, Black representatives of the Black community, who are starting to work with us to say, how can we add value, how can Girl Scouts add value to the community over and above, which we do now? And we tend, again, to be mostly reaching the Black community through community programs. But we would like Black girls to have a very much fuller experience in Girl Scouts. And how do we do that with the resources that we have, but with a better engagement from Black families? And then our final group is a group led by a board member, an LGBTQ group. And here, we're looking at how can we ensure that LGBTQ girls feel welcome in Girl Scouts? I will tell you that we are awaiting decisions from GSUSA this year along LGBTQ policy and guidelines, which will impact the entire nation. And Sophia Chang, the new CEO, is aware that this is a pressing thing. And she's also said that she wants to involve girls a lot in making these policies and guidelines. So part of the LGBTQ group that GSNI has started will be looking at the girl voice. You know, what do you think? And from our early data, and perhaps, which is obvious to many of you, girls are thinking differently about this than many of our volunteers and adults. So that's going to be an interesting topic to have on the discussion basis throughout the summer. But remember, we're girl-led, and we'll be looking to see what the girl's voice is in this. So any of these, still welcome members. Definitely, if you're part of the community, we really, really welcome you into one of these. But if you're an ally, you know, we'd love to have your voice as well. We just want to make sure that we don't have more allies than we actually do members of the community. So if any of these are of interest to you, you know, please do, please do get in contact. And Holly Bartelt would be the person to speak to. Can you move on, Chris? Thank you. Right, I'm just going to reflect very briefly. I mean, the best thing about this slide is that Chris managed to find a very old image of me from LinkedIn. I was probably 15 years, 15 years old. I actually have been here for eight years and nine months. And I actually finally retired on July 1st. And my last two days next week will be doing a handover of the new CEO, Carrie, who Dana talked about earlier on. So I just picked out a few things that obviously have been on the front of my mind the whole time. So the biggest challenge is membership. And membership for our council, as all councils, has pretty much been in a sort of steady, slow decline over the last 20 years, I want to say now. And then a deep decline during COVID, for very obvious reasons. We have to continue to grow our membership. But the reality is that probably that unless GSUSA does something radically different, it's going to be hard to bounce back to levels that we had in 2002. Councils have a lot of discretion, that's what they do. But you know, our boundaries, our membership profile, the way we recruit, you know, the levels that we have, and daisies, brownies, juniors, cadets, all these different levels, that's set by GSUSA. Unless GSUSA come up with a different model around how girls engage or how volunteers engage with us potentially, or simplify the program, it's going to be really hard, I think, to really, really bounce back to the levels that we saw 10 or 20 years ago. But there's certainly runway right now to pick up what we lost during COVID. And as you can see, we're working really hard at that. I put COVID on both sides of the equation, actually. So COVID was really hard. It was hard, obviously, for girls. And we know coming out that there's a big crisis of mental health, and many of you'll be aware. And we know coming out that there's a big crisis of mental health and many of you'll be aware of this. It was really tough on volunteers as well, who were trying to run their troops in any way they could. At the same time as probably homeschooling and, you know, thank you for, thank you for everyone who, who kept, kept with us and kept going during that. And then it was pretty tough on our staff as well. We had to manage our costs very quickly. You know, if your membership is down a lot and cookies aren't what you hoped they would be, then you have to look at your budget. And we actually, as you're aware, we cut nine full-time staff and then we reduced the hours of everybody who remained by twenty percent and we reduced their salaries by twenty percent. And that was, that was tough for, for many staff. We committed that we will not do that again if another really deep round of COVID comes. But it did enable us to keep most of our staff during COVID and to get back up and running very quickly. And you'll see, I know that neighboring councils maybe haven't had their stores open for quite a long time. But we've managed to, you know, get our stores going and we've had them up and running for, for, for a couple of years almost. The other big challenge, of course, is selling a camp and I'm, you know, it was unfortunate but necessary that we sold both Chapman Hills and Far Horizons during my time here. I wish we didn't have to do it, but that's the reality of trying to make budgets and membership. And if camp's not used, it's just not a very good use of our money. And as you know, we've taken money from the sale of some of these camps and reinvested them, at least partially into other camps. So it's not fun. I mean, what I will say now, though, is that we are committed to the remaining three camps. Something desperately awful would have to happen with membership for us to say any one of these is up for sale. So we are committed to Camp Dean, we're committed to McCormick and we're committed to Mary Ann Beebe Centre. And, you know, doing the necessary infrastructure investments as fast as we can. The other challenge, I didn't put it on here, I mean, you'll all recognize this, the hardest, hardest thing of all, being a volunteer or a staff member is going to a funeral of a volunteer or a girl who has died. I've been to, I believe, three funerals of girls who died during my time here and many more adult funerals. And it's always, always the hardest thing for us to do. Not putting it on here, but those are the memories, the saddest memories I will take with me. Successes, I mean, our Long Range Property Plan, we spent a lot of time figuring out, first of all, what programs should we have? We have our four program pillars now around travel and outdoor activities and adventure and career exploration and interest exploration, as well as practical life skills. And that kind of formed the basis of our Long Range Property Plan. We did hire an external consultant who gave us a fantastically high cost that we could never manage to invest. But we have picked away at that. Again, everything's a little bit on hold because our membership is down, but we have picked away at that. And you'll know, we have new cabins, we have new facilities at all of our camps. They're substantially different from how they were five years ago. The other thing, of course, that we had as part of this Long Range Property Plan was to sell all of our old legacy centers. And thank God we did that before COVID, because it would be very difficult now, I think. And to invest instead in the resource centers that we have in our, in strip malls, which are well-frequented, easy to get to, and allows our members to do sort of multiple errands at the same time. And that has been a great success. In fact, such a good success that GSUSA believe they invented the policy, the the investment policy and now call it Explorer Centers and are rolling it out across the country. So I'm just very grateful that we thought about this and that it happened prior to COVID. It also allowed our staff who were already equipped technologically and mentally to work from home, to make an easy transition when COVID actually came. So that was really, really helpful as well. I've talked a lot about inclusion and belonging already. I'm, I'm proud that we've like, like many organizations, we thought we were being inclusive. And then with the tragedies of the summer of two thousand and twenty, we realized that whilst we certainly weren't racist, we were not anti-racist either. And we've had a lot of education within the board, within our staff. I know volunteers are starting to do it and we have plans for next year as well. Just to say, how do we make sure that every single girl and her family feels that really that they do belong in Girl Scouts and they're going to get the same opportunity as a traditional troop would? COVID, I put as a success as well. I mean, we survived it, right? We got through it. We were able to bounce back pretty quickly. And by that, I mean, the collective, we, you know, volunteers and girls and us. And the world isn't going to be the same again, but I think most people are looking at the future and saying, well, let's take the good things that we learnt during COVID with us and let's improve on, on the new world that we have. So it's a success that we got through COVID and we're growing again. And then my final success I put on there was the Appreciative Inquiry Program that we had last year. We engaged for the first time with a lot of stakeholders, a lot of volunteers interviewed or participated in it. And the processes that have come out of that, with the action teams, allows us to give volunteers a much better voice and for us to listen much better, I think. So I'm proud that that kind of led the way to a much better engagement with our volunteers from many, many different voices. Next slide, please, Chris. Okay, so I want to share briefly learnings from my PhD because I really think it's actually useful for Girl Scouts and for troop leaders and for parents. There's been some very interesting learnings that I'm sharing. I haven't written up all my PhD yet, but I have completed the research, which is really great. In fact, last week I was in England at the International Leadership Association's Women in Leadership Conference because my paper was selected for presentation. And I'm giving you a tiny little piece of it now so that you can see actually what could I take away as a parent or as a troop leader and do in my own troop. So next slide, please. So the, the actual title of the PhD was How Young Women Age Eighteen to Twenty-Two. So that's Gen Z, right? In the USA, Mexico and Sri Lanka develop leader self-identity through childhood and adolescent experiences. So let me just unpack that a little bit. I'm not going to talk this evening about Mexico and Sri Lanka, but I pitched those countries because I had interview subjects that I would easily be able to, to, to find an interview in English. And they're three different cultures. And I was wondering, is this process of leader self-identity development the same in all three countries? What is leader self-identity? Well, it's simply the fact that you put your hand up and you say, I'm a leader. So when I was searching my young women eighteen to twenty-two to interview, and each of them had about a two-hour interview with me on a particular, using a particular process and theory. I was, I was simply able to say, if you consider yourself a leader, that's what I need for my research. So I wasn't asking adults, older adults or professors in college or anything like that to nominate young women to me. They just had to put their hand up and say, I am a leader. And that's what is important to me, partly because in Girl Scouts, I hope the girls would say, I am a leader. And because you have to have what's called a representative sample of young women, I didn't just mine deeply into our young alumni in GSNI, or that would have been interested, that would have been interesting. I made sure that I had young women who spread from across the USA in terms of representing, you know, different pathways to leadership. Next slide, please. So this is the model of identity formation. So what does this mean? I mean, it's like, it's a bit technical. So on the left-hand side, and I'll talk about each of these, you have the precursors. So these are the things which seem to be pretty static and almost a requirement if these young women are then going to build on them to be able to say, I mean, you know, I'm a leader by the time they, they reach a young adulthood. So I'll talk about those. There are two main ways, and they are interlinked, that girls are actually learning leadership. Obviously, the activities that girls do, and that depends a little bit on the different countries that there are, but also how adults behave with respect to the girls who are learning the activities. And this is where it's really, really interesting and important for Girl Scouts. And then the strength of the leadership experience, so the orange arrow, so depending on how good that leadership experience is, i.e. the types of activities and the types of reinforcement that girls are getting, leads to a stronger leader self-identity. Next slide, please. So here are the parent precursors. My parent, in my database that I had, all girls had a dad and a mom. And I can't tell you whether this would be true for different types of families or different types of caregivers, but they all had a dad and a mom. And most of the parents were professionally educated or had degrees or were very enthusiastic about supporting their girls' leadership development. Right? So remember here, we're not talking about how do girls develop. We're talking how do girls develop leadership? So the parents were really important. And that was true across all, actually, all of my countries. What the parents did and how they behaved was very important for the girls. So here are the parent behaviors. And these are the things that are important to take away. No helicoptering, right? So all of these parents gave what's called agency. So they trusted their daughter's choices. They trusted their daughters even from little to make choices. So if a little girl would say things like, I want to do, I don't know, judo or I want to karate or I wanted to join Girl Scouts. The parents would say, yeah, that's absolutely fine. I'm assuming they had the money. And they would let the girl sort of pick what she wanted to do. And there's quite a lot of literature around what's called sampling before specialization. Sampling is particularly important if you're young, if you're a young girl, which means that you try lots of different things. It seems to be this experience that's important. So don't get into one activity at the age of four and stick with that to the exclusion of everything else. On the other hand, sampling before specialization also means that girls try a lot of things and then they start to figure out, what do I really like and what do I want to focus on? And, you know, typically you'll be having that happen by, by high school. Parents all had positive expectations, but they didn't force their expectations on the girls. So they didn't, girls didn't get into trouble if they didn't get an A at school. The parents were just like, I know you can do well. My expectation is that you will try your hardest. And I want to see that you're stepping up and taking responsibility for it. On the other hand, when the daughter did do well, they were very proud of her and they told her that they were very proud of her. They also accepted failure as part of learning. And you can describe failure in many ways. I mean, failure could be, I hate volleyball. I don't want to do volleyball anymore. And then the parent would often say, well, you're going to play till the end of the year because you'll be letting the team down. But if you really hate it, you don't have to do it anymore. That could be seen as failure. Also could be seen as failure, not getting a grade that you thought you should at school. That happens sometimes, right? Or, you know, not doing very well in a relationship with somebody, that happens as well. But parents didn't punish failure in inverted commas. They just said, yeah, that happens. It's good. What did you learn from it? The other thing that was common, actually across all three countries, they provided a global environment. So what does that mean? It means that maybe the parents came, you know, were, were from different cultures themselves, or maybe they spoke multiple languages. Or maybe the girls were interested in learning about other cultures and other languages, or maybe the parents traveled a lot or took them to museums. What the parents were trying to do here is expand the girl's worldview such that it's not me and my town, but I have a much bigger understanding of how me and my town fits into the global landscape. And that was actually a critical kind of piece of the parent behavior towards leader self-identity. Next slide, please, Chris. Okay, so let's look at the girls. So these are static traits, i.e. we saw this from very little when the girls were talking about their leadership experiences. Some could go back to the age of four or five and think about things right up to their current age, which was up to twenty-two. These held true the whole time. Okay? So a positive relationship with family members. Just about every girl had a good relationship with her mom. Some of the girls reported a bit of a fraught relationship with their dads, although they appreciated that their dads loved them and they talked about that. But sometimes their dads were projecting, you know, a desire for them to be good at sport on them. But in the main, they had a positive relationship with their parents. And they often got on well with their siblings or with their cousins or their wider family. So it wasn't the girl on her own. It was being embraced in a wider community and family. Seeking academic excellence. So the young women who identified as leaders at the ages of eighteen to twenty-two all wanted to do well at school. In fact, this was a driver of early leadership, which I'll show in a minute. They all had, had a desire to learn and curiosity, and that was often sparked by what the parents did to ensure that that, that, that happened. And they were conscientious. So many of them told me, I've never missed a homework assignment. I've never been late for school. So they really kind of put their mind in the place where they have to be responsible for myself. Many of them told me they give a hundred percent to everything they do, and they might even sacrifice their own well-being or mental health. That doesn't typically happen when the girls are younger, but by the time they get to high school or young college age, many of them are actually pushing themselves so hard that they are, they are having mental health problems. And the last thing is they do enjoy challenging themselves. So they enjoy challenging themselves outdoors, indoors, all the activities they do, they want to do well because they feel they let themselves down if they're not doing as well as they can. Next slide, please. So here are things that don't matter and they might surprise you. What this says is if, if the girl is not receiving some of these attributes, or if she receives them in a different way from others, it doesn't matter because it doesn't make any impact on her young adult leader self-identity. So her position in her family, we've always bought, we've always been told that the oldest one becomes the leader. Not necessarily. We had girls who were the oldest, the youngest, single, brothers older, brothers younger, it makes no difference at all. The number or the type of schools they attend, whether they moved around a lot, whether they stayed in one school, whether they went to a Catholic school, a Buddhist school in Sri Lanka, were homeschooled, it doesn't make any difference to what type of school you, you attend. Whether you're religious or not, girls really didn't bring religion up at all, except to note that their family wasn't a particular religion. But the religion didn't seem to play much of a part in their leadership development. Family finances. So I had, I spoke to girls who obviously came from families with some means to those who did not have much money, but as long as you can, you know, as long as you can feed your family and you've got a roof over your head, it doesn't seem to matter beyond that in terms of your leadership development. Another interesting one, family dynamics. Some girls had almost absent parents or dads in the military, so they didn't see him for a long time. Some said they had very happy childhoods. Some had somewhat chaotic childhoods with kind of a lot of turmoil going on within the family. That doesn't seem to make a difference either. Nobody told me they were abused. And I'm assuming that abuse makes a difference, but I didn't see this in my, in my dataset. Doesn't make any difference what mom does, does she stay at home or is she paid working, a member of society? Doesn't make a difference at all. This is interesting, hands-off or hands-on parenting. So some parents, and by this I don't mean helicoptering, I mean, being very present for the girls. So if the girl was in a dance class, for example, some parents went to every single recital, every single rehearsal, and some went to one or two. Some parents go to every single sports match and others don't. It doesn't make any difference. Doesn't make any difference on the end of their leader self-identity. Also, childhood experiences doesn't really make a difference. I asked people to tell me, these young women, to tell me about good and bad things that's happened during their life and you know, nobody had a parent who died, which might make a difference. But you know, if there'd been a death of a close relative or if they'd done a lot of happy things, that doesn't seem to make a difference either. So as long as the parents are providing the environment we talked about earlier on, that's okay. Academic interests, probably more told me that they didn't like STEM things, but in the main, it doesn't make any difference at all what you study to what your leadership capacity is going to be. And also how outgoing the girl is, which is interesting. We all tend to think that extrovert girls make the best leader. It doesn't really work like that at all. Introvert girls can also be very good leaders because they're driven by this need to pursue academic excellence, to give a hundred percent to everything that they do. And that's not linked with extroversion. Can you move on, please? Okay, so I'm at the green bit now. We're going to look at the activities that develop leadership. And this is important. You might have heard yourself already or thought about yourself in the, in the parent precursors. In this, which you can see yourself as a parent or Girl Scout leader. So can we go to the next slide, please? So here are the activities that develop leadership. And interestingly, they are the same pretty much across three countries. But in the USA, there's way more opportunity for girls to develop leadership. In fact, I would say there's an excess of opportunity and there's so much expectation around what girls in high school will do to get into a good college that many of the young women I spoke to in the USA took a step back in their first year when they got to college because they were so burnt out. They needed that breather before they could sort of relaunch themselves into leadership again. So if we look at this blue field here, in preschool and elementary school or kindergarten, this is the way that girls are showing leadership. And this can be encouraged or disencouraged by parents and teachers. So they're, they're the little girls who are leading their friends' groups. Right? Many of these, many of these girls told me, oh, maybe I was bossy. But they're trying to lead friends' groups. They want to determine what will be played. Even in the family, they might be the leader of, can we do this? Can we do this? Let's go and do this. Hey, dad, do this with me. They're very kind of enthusiastic organizers of the family. Classroom behavior is a very good indicator. And like, you would probably tell me, this is true in troops as well. But the girl who has her hand up all the time, right? She's the one who wants to answer the question, knows the answer to questions. And she's the one who's talking a lot. So, so being talkative is spirited, it's not naughty. And actually, it's quite a good predictor of your, of your desire to do well and to become a leader in the end. And then school projects. And this is a huge thing. If you're as old as me, you sat in classroom in alphabetical order and you wrote with a fountain pen. That's how I learnt, right? And since about nineteen eighty-six, the pedagogy has been to have smaller learning groups, probably two. Probably two to six, um, individuals in a group. Teachers are quite good at either placing kids together because they have similar interests and capabilities, or even mixing them up to see what will happen. And the whole purpose of these groups is both to learn academically, but also to learn how to work in a team. And almost without exception, our leaders are taking the lead in these groups. And it's mostly because they want academic excellence. Um, when I asked the girls, uh, at some point about their worst leadership experience, many of them talked about school projects which they had tried to lead. They thought they had a great idea, they'd driven it through the group, or the group hadn't done the work to their satisfaction, and they had spent all night redoing the group work. Um, and then not done very well in the presentation, or the teacher has said it wasn't group work or things like that. But very predictive is, are you trying to lead your group? And I'm going to say that that's probably seen in Girl Scouts as well. Um, I didn't do research around Girl Scouts, remember, I'm looking at all of the activities. But I would say you could probably see those behaviours in young girls as well. So in elementary school, that's where all these activities start. You have opportunities to do sports, performing arts, um, school clubs, youth organisations, I would put Girl Scouts in there, and, and school government. Mostly you're doing the activity, but you're also trying to start to show leadership in them. One of the downsides of these types of activities, particularly school government and sports, is that leadership in these groups tends to be awarded not because you show leadership potential, but because you're popular. Um, so often the coach picks someone who he thinks will manage, you know, manage the group well. But you're actually not doing very much leadership in, in sports groups. And similarly, in school government, it's often a popularity contest. Uh, middle and high school, you've got other opportunities to show leadership, and these seem to be more, um, material in terms of leadership capacity. So things like peer mentoring, um, peer mediation, tutoring, peer orientations, and stepping up for volunteering, and this is where Girl Scouts is huge, because volunteering is actually a great way to learn leadership. And then also starting with paid work. And then in college, the two things that are added, which have never been added before, if you need to or want to, is sorority and, and political organisations. So all girls are following this path, maybe not everyone does everything and has this opportunity. But this is kind of the timeline at which girls do things. And obviously, the older you get, the more opportunity you have to exercise leadership. So the best places to exercise leadership, can we go to the next slide please? Uh, when you can be a bit more activist. So let's look at the girl leader behaviour please. Okay, so I'm, I'll run through these a little bit because I know I'm running out of time. This is kind of, I'd call it spirited control. So if girls tell me, and many of them did, that, you know, as young as I can remember, I was a leader. Here's some of the quotes. I think I was bossy, I wanted to be in control, I would often take over group projects, I would take charge. I don't know if I was a bully or a leader, right? These girls said they were outgoing, talkative, and they raised their hands, and they often became a problem for the teacher who didn't know how to manage them. But they were showing spirit in a number of different ways. These are also the girls where, um, teachers are often asking them to do things useful, like, could you run this to the office please? Or we're going to walk in a line down the corridor, I'll lead, and can you be the one at the back to make sure that everybody, you know, moves along with it? These are the girls who are showing a lot of spirit. You don't necessarily have to be extrovert, although it's more likely. But you just, you really, really, really want to do well, and you're trying to show it in the way you behave. Next slide please. So from about, I want to say eleven, twelve, and that might be aligned with puberty. It might just be more aligned with the opportunities that girls are having to practise leadership. Girls are becoming more sophisticated, so they know that you can't just be bossy, you can't just tell the school group, this is what we're going to do. You can't just tell your friends, this is how we're going to play. That's how early leadership is manifesting, but it won't work if you want to be a leader by the time you're adult. Um, every girl by middle school, at the latest in my cohort, has already said, I'm a leader, I know I'm a leader. Um, but now they're trying to lead using empathy, using communication skills, they're trying to listen better. Um, they're trying to be responsible for kind of the team output. They're also getting increasing confidence in their leadership capability. Um, friendship dynamics are important to success, I want to say this. Many of the girls were bullied themselves because they showed, they were different, right? They wanted to be leaders, um, they spoke out a lot, right? So they made themselves vulnerable targets. Um, many of the girls did have also good friendship base. Um, either way, the dynamics of how your friends behave with you is very important in, in helping you develop a leadership style. Next slide please. Right, I'm going to look now at, um, how can you have a good leadership experience? All of these things that I've talked about, that are ways to get to learn leadership and the ways that parents can help you or teachers can help you. What's really important, if a girl is going to say with great conviction, I'm a leader, so let's look at those. So I've talked a little bit about sampling then specialisation. This means let the girl try a whole load of things and figure out, what am I good at? What do I like? Activism and leader role creation versus leadership as a popularity contest. So I, I have to say, based on the research, that unless you specialise in high school and college in sports leadership, you're not really learning much leadership. Um, far better is to do things, I have to say, like Girl Scouts, where you can create your own roles as a leader, but you can be activist. So rather than an adult telling you, this is how we're going to do things, which is often the case in sports leadership or even student government, unless you become, you know, very, very vested in it. Um, it's where you can, you know, decide how you volunteer, is where you can create your own project to make change. And these types of leadership experiences are pivotal, pivotal for girls to say with confidence, I'm a leader, right? Um, learning from leadership crises. Every girl has a leadership crisis during her experience. It's not kind of a make or break, but how she comes through it, you know, I talked about the school projects failing. There are other, there were other examples as well. Some did give me examples of sports leadership. There's a crisis and how she processes it, and with the help of the adult, makes a big difference to her confidence and leadership afterwards. Um, leading authentically versus leading as instructed, it's not useful to be told, this is how to do it. What is really useful is how we do it in Girl Scouts, actually, whereas you sit back, the adults sit back and let the girls figure it out. That's a much more useful leadership experience. Um, and then to be acknowledged by adults, which is the last slide I'm going to go to, is so important. Many, many girls told me stories of how, um, adults had either set them on their way or held them back. So one girl, actually a Girl Scout from our council, said, I was really, really talkative and outgoing in, in elementary school, but the teacher kept telling me to shut up, you know, and, uh, and I lost all my mojo. And in middle school, I was so quiet that my teachers told my parents, he wouldn't know who I was if I didn't have a, um, a seating chart. And yet she's a very confident young leader, right? Others told me, the teacher told me when I was, when my parents went to the parent-teacher conference when I was six, um, they told my parents, your daughter's a leader, and my parents came home and told me that, and I've never forgotten it. And it's these little nuggets of things, you know, the, when I asked, um, the women, who are your role models? A couple of people said their Girl Scout leaders had been role models because they had been there for them all the time. They gave them a lot of trust, they gave them what's called agency, and they let them get on, and they just kind of gave them the appropriate feedback at the appropriate time. Um, next slide please. So this is why adult reinforcement is really, really important, right? Don't say negative comments, don't tell a girl to stop talking all the time, although that's really, really hard. See if you can redirect to find out why, why is she talking? And how can you use that positive energy? That's her spirit, right? And it's not naughty. And I know it's nothing, it's really, really difficult if you've got a room full of girls running around and, uh, uh, and being difficult, you know, in terms of behaviour for adults. But that's where leadership is starting, in this kind of wanting to express themselves and bringing this energy. Um, teen mental health is super important. So what we say to teens matters a lot. And that's even from very early childhood. And the positive things we say stay with children. So my advice here would be, if, if you see a girl in your troop doing something that's leadership, tell her, right? Please tell her, say, hey, I saw you doing that, and that's an example of a really good listener or a really good communicator, or showing empathy, that's leadership as well, right? So, so point these things out to girls. Two other things, these last two things. Um, I asked the girls, um, have you ever done any leadership training? And there was a variety of answers. Um, I, I allowed them to have a very wide definition. The most useless type of leader training that we can give girls is to sit them in a classroom and tell them about leadership. Surprise, surprise, right? What really works with girls is to have the opportunity to self-reflect. And we live in a world where we're rushing around so much, even as adults, we often don't have time to think about ourselves and our personalities and who we want to be. So giving girls the opportunity to self-reflect and to manage their energy and then, uh, think about where do they want to go is really important. This is one of the reasons why I'm so excited about the Native American talking circle. Um, I didn't know about this at the time when I was doing this research, of course. The other one is mentor frequently. So what was really, really useful to girls is to have somebody who is there and proactive and can say to them, would you like to talk about that experience? Or how do you think your leadership is going? Or would you have done this differently? Or do you need any help, right? Just to be there, that's way more useful in terms of learning leadership skills. The sitting in a classroom and being taught, taught about transformational leadership, charismatic leadership, or authentic leadership. Or, you know, the girls could recite these things without knowing what they meant at all. So next slide. Keep going. And I'm running over a bit, this is the last slide. So what does strong leader self-identity look like? A young woman who's eighteen to twenty-two and says, I'm a leader, what are these things that she's telling me? Why does she know she's a leader? It's about confidence, your abilities, it's about having had experience through multiple challenging activities. Um, the activist mentality is strong, right? So I can change the world, but to have that mentality and that confidence means you have to have had experiences where you can do that, right? And preparedness to lead in any setting, or any type of group. One of my questions was, are there groups of people you wouldn't want to lead? And many of the young women told me men, especially older men. But some of them said, well, you know, I'm confident in my abilities, I'm sure I'd find a way. Diverse, diversity and cultural differences is really important. And then crucially, an understanding of your own weaknesses and how you might want to improve. So when I asked girls, what would you like to improve at, you know, what might help your leadership skills? Two of the very common things are presentation, public speaking and conflict resolution. So if you ever have a chance to practise public speaking or conflict resolution with your girls, that's something that these young women feel they need a lot. And then the final thing is a vision of one's own personal future. So that's why self-reflection is important. That's why it's really, really great to have the opportunity to work with girls. And as a little aside, when I did my PhD, the first time, the first couple of weekends, we were looking at leading self, right? And the first exercise we had to do was write our own a bittery. I mean, that sounds super morbid, right? But if you write down, what do you want people to remember you for? That's very interesting. And we had to do that a couple of times during our leadership training. And during that time, I was personally able to focus on what matters to me. And what matters to me right now is giving young women the skills to be leaders because my generation have pretty much screwed up this world, right? And so it's the young girls and Girl Scouts or elsewhere, um, who I hope will have the leadership resources to sort of make a positive change for everybody and for everything. Next slide. So I'm going to hand back to Dana. I'm sorry I've taken a little bit more time than I wanted to, but I hope you find that interesting. And, you know, I'm available offline to answer any questions you would like. And I hope also you could see yourself as a parent, as a troop leader in there, and the sort of easy things you could do to make a real, real difference in a girl's leadership experience and her future leadership self-identity. So Dana, over to you.
Thank you Fiona. Um, I can say after listening to that, I see so many things that, um, are positive to Girl Scouting and, and that we can do for girls. Um, and I was that little girl whose teacher told her parents she talked too much in class. So I, and, and my mentor all my life was one of my Girl Scout leaders. So I, I really feel and understand everything that Fiona has talked about. We have the opportunity to make such an impact on girls, and this is one way we can. Um, what I want to do is give you some dates to remember, activities that are coming up um, in the next few months. And we have, um, volunteer things, we have some family things, and we have adult volunteer things. Um, the blended learning and first aid and CPR class, a person that's volunteer. Camp Dean seventy-fifth anniversary celebration. And the, uh, two thousand twenty-two Fall Festival at Camp McCormick are for our Girl Scout families. So it'd be great to fill camp with all of our Girl Scout families those days. We have, um, overnight camping and training available, lodge, you know, outdoor overnight. Um, lots of dates there. We also have Stu Weekend, which is for adult volunteers to be at camp. Um, as an adult, we've always wanted to go back to camp without our girls, this is your opportunity. And, um, get educated as well. And then, um, Holly is going to host a volunteer connections on both August fifteenth and August sixteenth. That's where our volunteers can, um, talk with Holly, bring up issues or, or get feedback, um, talk about specific topics. So those times will be available that you can, um, meet with Holly and, um, talk with her and give her any feedback that you would like her to know. So we have lots of stuff going on, um, over the summer and in the early fall, lots of fun stuff at camp. Next slide please. Personally, I would just like to say thank you for spending your evening with us. Um, we truly appreciate it, um, all the time you do, all the dedication, um, you give to Girl Scouting and, and to your girls in your troops. Um, believe me, you, you, you are making an impact on girls. I was that little girl. So, um, just think, in about twenty years, some little girl is going to be doing this, just as I did. So I want to thank you for that. Um, I also want to thank Fiona for her time at, um, GSNI and for being such a wonderful partner with me in the times I've been on, um, as a board member. And especially this year that I have been a board chair. Um, I thought we made a great team and I'm going to miss her. So thank you Fiona.
Thank you Dana. Um, I mean, this is obviously a bittersweet moment for me. Um, next Friday is my last day. And it's sad, I mean, for a long time, I've kind of felt, you know, I, I need to retire. I feel I've brought my best energy in, and, and during COVID, and now it's harder and harder for me to bring good energy all the time, but I've tried my best, um, and I'll miss you all. So thank you.
Um, we want to again, thank you for coming and have a wonderful evening. And we look forward to, um, talking with you again. And, um, next time, maybe our town hall, we'll be meeting, you'll have an opportunity to talk to our new CEO, Carrie. Thanks so much.